Yes. He may be trying to unmute. Well, so Rick Dory. Don Matice. Jim King.
Yeah, this is Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Aaron Chase is absent. Greg Stewart, absent. Betty Harris Howard is absent. Jimmy Wolf. And Brett McCarthy.
Is four of us enough?
Five.
Oh, Jim, okay.
Four is enough.
Yeah, four is enough, but you said five. And I don't believe you're voting on anything, but you'll want to appoint Brent if you, as a voting member.
Only.
Yeah. So you just received those minutes tonight, so I would suggest that table until the next meeting, at which time you'll have tonight's minutes, the minutes from the last meeting, and then I also discovered that March 27th weren't approved, so I'll have those for you as well. No, no. No. I'm muted, so that'll be easier for us to hear. So in front of you, just so you know, you have the agenda, you have the minutes that you will save for next time, a copy of the bylaws that you adopted at the last meeting. So this is the official copy, they're also posted online. Then you have a copy of the, and we had looked at this once before, but it's regarding the manufactured housing, the stick law. There are some changes that we need to adapt our ordinance to. Correct. And attached to that is the map that depicts the public sewer location. We'll want to look at that in conjunction when we get to that. And then you should have an 11 by 17 copy of currently being reviewed by the public zoning. So this has not, this has not been adopted yet, but this is that one that you all asked to be posted.
And nobody said anything about it yet?
I, I had someone call who's just moved here, who was asking about the existing zoning map. She didn't have any concerns or, you know, she's just curious. Correct. That's the PDF. And then there's the one, the GIS one, that you can zoom in and out and the, the data from assessing is not connected to it yet, but it's still very helpful. Correct. Yep. And then there are two other pieces of information, to round it out, make it a big stack. One of them is just a few pages that include, it starts on page 16 and it ends on page 20. And that is, I'd like to go over these piece by piece if we could, but this includes, I mentioned in the agenda that we were going to look at the table of uses and the Vulcan space table with dimensional requirements. So I'd like to go over, and none of this is for you to make decisions tonight, it's all discussion. Especially, yeah, yeah. Some of it we've touched on. And then there's one more piece of information. And that is the ord, the definition section of the ordinance. In all draft, not all of that is, the thing is that what happened while you didn't get everything all at once is because, and I think I told you this, I worked on all of Ed's changes and then I messed up the format. So, that was a lot of fun. So I couldn't get the whole thing back in time. So now I just have these pieces and I'm, I'm almost there, and then I can have Ed look at it and bring the whole thing to you. So these are pieces of what's going on. So you'll see, some, some of the things in here have not been vetted by Ed yet. So, for instance, the Vulcan space table has setback changes, and that's something you all looked at last year. And I took those from Ed's notes, but I need him to confirm that until you actually look at it. But they're shown on this, but we're not actually reviewing them tonight. So I'll, I'll highlight which ones are for consideration and which ones are later. Well, some things are flagged to discuss, but it's just at the beginning. There's, there'll be a lot to do with it, or more to do with it, I should say, so. It's just starting it. Yes, I do.
I made a mess.
Warren, that is the, sorry, the bylaw, free to bylaws. So that is for you to keep. That's just for your records. This correct. This one is for us for discussion tonight. I'll number them next time. That one is your, your bylaws, so just, you can hold on to that. You, you adopted it formally. You have to live and die by it now.
Your bar board?
Yes, yes.
I didn't know they still said that.
So I mentioned this at a couple of previous meetings, more kind of in passing, but basically it goes along with the state trying to create more housing. And so they've said currently, or up until recently, you could separate out mobile homes. The definition of mobile homes and manufactured homes was different, but you could separate it out and you could disallow them different places in town. And what the state is saying is, wherever you allow single family residence, you have to allow a, a mobile home. And I may be using that terminology wrong. Steve corrected me earlier, and I, I'm going to use it for tonight because I'm not certain. So we have to change the table of uses to make sure that we allow these wherever we allow single family homes, which is pretty simple. When we get to that table, I think we should just strike it. Strike mobile homes as a use, because wherever single family is, that is now considered a single family. So that's pretty simple. But what I would like to poke around with tonight is revisiting the table of uses, because you have areas that are designated allowed for mobile home parks. And it's not everywhere in town. Now, the regulations say that they can only be where there's public sewer. So this is why I provided the sewer map. So in conjunction with your, oh, you know what? Let me turn off the fan.
I love hearing the train.
I love the train.
I love that sound. And then if it's raining and you hear the trade, I'm like, oh, yeah. It's going to be all over. What are we going to listen to anymore?
Yeah.
So, to be clear, you elaborated on this. To me, this is talking about manufactured housing versus mobile home.
You have to look at them all the same.
So when they say manufactured home, they're also talking about mobile.
Correct. And that's when I said the terminology. I think they're all manufactured homes, and manufactured homes are looked at the same as stick built. The codes will be different, but as far as zoning goes, they're all the same. A mobile home park.
Oh, a park.
Yep, yep. So let me, let me open the, do you guys have your zoning ordinance with you tonight? And because then I have it up here, we can go back and forth, it's just that this one's marked up. So on page 28, I'll just scroll up here. So on page 28. Yeah, let's just do that. Okay. So this is what you have for specific requirements around mobile home parks. So the category is mobile homes, but it speaks to individual mobile homes, and then it speaks to parks. And the table of uses now looks at those separately, and we're, what? The recommendation is, and we've gone past the table for now, but would be just to strike mobile home, individual mobile homes as a use, but mobile home parks is technically a subdivision. So, and it is a separate use. It is required to be on, I just want to, see? Thank you. Yep. I think that's the one map I gave you, right? Not necessarily. There are some places that they're, they don't coincide. Not a lot. Yeah, there's not very many. So if you look at the zoning map. I'm adept enough to jump around. Okay, not bad. So up in here, you can see my mouse moving around. There is public sewer up in that area, and it stops right before, what is this road here? I'm having, no. We just had an application for the solar. Yes, that's current landmark. So this parcel right here is not on sewer and water. So it ends right in this, this area here. So looking at the colors up there, the general commercial is allowed, mobile homes are allowed with planning board approval. In limited commercial, which is the lighter pink, so in this area here, this area here, is that helpful, or is it too scattered when I move it around? Okay. There, it does not, we do not allow mobile home parks. Industrial, they're allowed. Village, they're allowed. The general residential, which is this peach color, they are not allowed. And in the rural district, which is all of the white, they are allowed the planning board approval. And they're always planning board approval required, it's a subdivision, so we can just make an assumption where they're permitted, it's by planning board. So, and I don't have the ability to show a layer. It would be easy when we get the maps, all the layers together, to show the sewer and the zoning right on one map, but we've got two to go back and forth. So what I would like you to entertain is just some discussion around is it adequate the way it is? Do you want to contemplate allowing them in other locations or restricting them in certain locations? Because there's a lot of conversation about housing and affordable housing, and this is, this is an opportunity.
So my only thought is, I don't like the idea of it being that limited commercial area, right, as you drive through our town.
Now, it still is allowed in the general commercial, so there is along the strips of, so it's not allowed in the light pink. It is allowed in the dark pink.
Essentially follows 202.
Well, yeah, you're right, because a lot of it, yeah.
And if manufactured homes are considered homes, why, why would you even have a section on mobile home parks?
Because a mobile home park, the people don't own, it's not a subdivision in the sense that you own the land. They're not individual lots. So you have one lot, and all of the units are on there. So you're not subdividing the land. But because there's three or more units, it falls under the definition of subdivision, the state of man, so it, mean, so it's one parcel with the multiple dwellings on it. It's different than if it was a single parcel and you're putting a one unit on it.
But it has to have.
It's a development. So you could, you could, and so when you come up for subdivision, you could look at it, you could require amenities, you could require landscaping, street trees, different things like that under the subdivision review. So what that mobile home park looks like, everyone has something in their head as to what that looks like. It depends on what you all have for regulations, can you look at what you have? Is that adequate? Do you want to add more? Are you not interested in addressing this at all? And I understand that this, we're just starting this discussion, so you know, I just want to plant some seeds and have you guys. Correct. Correct.
Oh, do you, see, I wish we could go back in time. Why did they say, no, it's a limited commercial? Before, right? Like, I want to know why. What was, was there a really good reason?
I don't know. I've been poking through the files as I can, you know, because there are files, zoning limits have come in. And sometimes you just can't tell by looking at it, you have to make, make some assumptions. And let me just double check myself about the parks.
And I think there is one in that limited commercial.
There is one right over back here, next to Coppasy Stream.
Yep, there's one right off, right past DR struck top of the hill, just as you're starting to plateau going in towards Augusta, on the left-hand side, there's a mobile home park in there too. Just past Bike of Prayers.
Sneaky.
I'm pretty sure it's.
I mean, I think they're very affordable for people that have no other options and they don't want to live.
Oh, yeah.
So, so now here's, I mean, we could always, my only concern, I don't like driving down the road and seeing anything really other than trees, because I'm weird, but so I just don't like seeing stuff, but you could always do that. Exactly. So maybe then we just open it up to like wherever, I don't, unless you guys are, as a reason not to.
So what do you want to accomplish again?
I, I just want you to have some discussion around it, and then we'll take that information and come back with it for a future meeting. But it is state law, so at a minimum, we have to, or need to, you guys to indicate or give me direction to strike the use from the table. And it just goes under single family. And then the mobile home park will leave it as it is, unless you want to do something different with it. And I, and I don't imagine you know tonight. So now, and if you look at these criteria, it speaks to a setback. So you'll see when I pull this up, some, there's some little notes that I put in there and highlighted things I wouldn't forget to look at. So it's not all going to be a clear, underlying strikeout. It's a little muddy, but I can see where my thoughts are going. Well, we need to, so one of the things that I want to bring up is that we do not have a column for residential, net residential density. We have the terms defined, give me just one moment here. So there's the table that has setbacks, but for this use specific, these are the setbacks that apply. That, no. And. So if you decide that you want to make changes to where they are located or disallowed, regardless, you could make changes to the design standards. And maybe these are exactly what you want, but there are other options if you'd like. And one of the things the state is saying is you can have design criteria for individual units, regardless if they're part of mobile home park. So on a single family lot or on a single lot, do you want to require that they have skirting or have a peak roof or different materials on the siding? There's the state saying you can do that if you want to. So these are options for you to contemplate before it comes back for another discussion. And then I would take any kind of sense that I have this evening and, you know, make modifications or do research accordingly. Yep. So you have, you have addressed this in your ordinance. The state's saying, okay, wherever you said individual mobile home can go, get rid of that, because they can go anywhere that you have a lot. That's black and white. That's not, there's no discretion there, except that you can have design guidelines with that, if you'd like to have that. This here, I just felt it was an opportunity to revisit it. Even if it's just to say, no, we don't want to do anything. This is the current ordinance. You do not have this section. No, you don't. It is part of your ordinance, but there aren't any changes. That was just a note to myself. I highlighted something, you know. I'm not sure what you mean by that, I'm sorry. Yeah, so if we look at the table of uses, we do currently, let me just jump back to that. I feel like half the ordinance is parking standards. Okay, so mobile home parks down below. And see, we're up on number 14 up here. We need, in order to meet the requirements of the law, that needs to be struck. Because currently, there are two places that you don't allow them. Limited, limited commercial and village, which was interesting, because you can have a mobile home park in the village, but you can't have a mobile home. So we are going to have to rectify that anyways.
So now they're allowed to.
On a, on a single lot, where you can have a single family home, yes. Correct. And then the other piece is just, do you want to revisit this? So my comment down here where the parks are allowed is, is that correct? And I wonder what year they did adopt that. I don't know.
Oh, because no, it's on left.
Yes.
Something food for thought here, because like I was saying, my first instinct is like, fine, just allow it wherever, and just have, you know, buffer zones and whatnot, but it could be something I'm missing.
And you want to make sure you time that, because if you decide to make changes, there's this whole pending application question, right? Like, we're going to make some changes, and anything that comes in before you do that is going to be under the current standard. So if it is something that you decide that you want, you just keep in mind that well, we're going to change it, we're going to allow it here, but if those standards aren't in place, it may not look like it looks like in your head, until you do that. Correct. I, I believe that we are required to do that. Yep. It is considered a single family dwelling. Correct. Because they, he does the, single family homes now, he does the permits, the building permit. So just like a stick-built house. Because we won't differentiate it moving forward.
So how do you account for things like
That is.
I guess the question would be, would we want to put restrictions if somebody's buying their own land and buying their local home, are we going to have them disfigured? On a slab?
So whatever that he's applying now, the state laws, those continue to apply. And then the question, the option is, do you want to go above and beyond life safety issues for aesthetic reasons? That's what the state's calling out.
So in that case, it's all under the state, and we wouldn't have to know yet, I suppose?
No, because Mark's going to apply whatever current building code we're under. So pertaining to a slab, whatever life safety, he's going to go by the current code that we've adopted. Yeah, I forgot about this too. It's saying you can't restrict based on that year. Taking 14 right out of the table. Well, we won't change, it's just, it is a single family dwelling, so we won't change. Yes.
And very specific in here as to what's required. And it's dealing with manufacturing. Treating it very much like a single family, single family home.
Wait, so they can put, technically, if someday we get sewer that runs through the rural zone, they could potentially buy like a 10 acre lot and then apply the subdivision for a mobile home park and build one in 10, 15 years down the line, something changes with this sewer system.
Potentially, but if you're monitoring your zoning, you're going to change that accordingly.
Okay, so right now, when you say the rural district is not going to happen right now, because there's no capability for it most, in, in any of the actual real rural areas.
As you go along, you look at your progress plan, you know, you do updates to that periodically. If there were changes to the water and sewer, I'm sure that you all would be looking at that.
Yeah.
Because you want.
And then adjust.
I'll give you a hypothetical. I think it's 42 and a half acres, but the 42 and a half acre lot runs from a mall drive up to Metro. It very least has sewer on the mall drive and water on the mall drive. Relative adequate size, I don't know.
Is it this parcel in here, one of these big parcels?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I'm saying, I'm pretty sure it is. It has one lot down on the, one lot kind of down onto the mall drive. And I can go up to Metcalf and pretty wide open. And then there is a house.
And that's the one that's just got the one right away into this kind of landlot.
Well, it's got right away a bullfrost, yeah. I, I don't know the geography, but anyway, that's a hypothetical.
I was just going to say, isn't it for the steep in there?
I haven't walked the property, but.
Again, this question, I'm outside of sewer and water. That may be a lot that would be available to do that for mobile home park.
And keep in mind, to Jamie's observation, that developers, when the numbers make sense, will pay to extend the sewer waters. So that's not uncommon, it, you know, when the, when the money works. It's all what? Oh, well, come stations. Well, I did, I did talk to the superintendent of the water district a few weeks ago, and he said there's adequate capacity. Because I keep hearing that there, you know, there are restrictions, yet.
They just replaced the pumps, didn't they? Do they actually do it yet? We had to approve them, getting it, because they got some sort of grant.
So if we, like, so let's say this is part of the discussion, if you move forward and say, yeah, we want to consider this and this. So if we, like, so let's say this is part of the discussion, if you move forward and say, yeah, we want to consider this and this, we could always ask, Wells is his last name, I apologize. Dan, thank you. We could ask him if he could come, maybe even via Zoom, and, you know, if you want, if you have questions that you wanted to ask. That's a good idea. So you guys have those materials. If you think of things, other things that you like as you're considering this moving forward, just, you know, shoot me an email or phone call, and then whenever you're ready, if and when you want to bring it back up. I will say that I will, I would like to get the general sense of if you're okay with me moving forward with the taking the table of uses, taking the mobile home on it there, because I do think we're required to do that. Okay. All right, sounds good. Thank you.
So when we, when we do that, so in a whole, we look at all the
Yeah, so you know, that's why a thousand cuts. We don't want to, every planning board meeting and council meeting, there's a public hearing on the zoning amendment. Then people stop paying attention. So I feel like, so we've talked about some minor things and kind of set them aside for now, and when we have, you know, enough, we should go ahead and post public hearings for that, and then move them to the council together. So this, to me, would be one of those things, we'll set it aside with. One of the ones that we said was, um, you have to go to the zoning board before the planning board, some, you know, just some clarification. Like, I have some of those set aside that you've already touched on, so as those accumulate. Pardon me? Correct. I think you're all set, yeah. Okay, table of uses. So I just, I'll make small observations. So this is outside of the shoreline zone, because the state dictates what can be done inside the shoreline zone. So the, your table one is here. I'm sorry. Yes. So there's three tables. One is for inside the shoreline, use is allowed. One is outside of the shoreline, use is allowed. And then the third one is the, um, dimensional requirements, like setbacks and. Alright, what are we looking at now? Sorry. I'm just gonna make an observation because it's there. In the ordinance, we don't currently, when we list our, I'm sorry, my brain's just skipping on me. Where you have the abbreviations, we don't currently have the affordable housing overlay. We have it in the district, in the description of the, um, districts, but we don't have it there. And I put the groundwater protection because we've had discussion around that. So again, I'm not proposing these right now, but they're things that are in play. And when I talk to Ed, I'll come back with you with a more definitive recommendation, you know, or not. So.
Those are the overlays on our map.
Correct. Yes, yeah. Need work, all of this. Yep, so table one, I'm just gonna actually skip through because it's, this is everything in the shoreline zone and the state dictates most of it. We're not, we're more restrictive on the state and some of the fill and earth moving, so I've highlighted that to make sure that that is the intent. So that's not something for tonight. Just a note to myself. So, table two. And we just talked about striking number fourteen. So over in there, I added a column for the overlay district for groundwater overlay, if we head down that road to specifically call out that it's not permitted mineral extraction there, because that's the ordinance you just created and is not permitted. So that would make the zoning ordinance consistent with that mineral extraction ordinance. I think also that we should make a reference to the ordinance here. So if you're looking up, where is this allowed? You see mineral extraction, and then I'll put a reference out to the, there's a separate ordinance for that. Does that make sense? Does this seem like the appropriate location? I was thinking, yeah, just after the, after the term mineral extraction, please see blah, blah, blah.
And you have that from marijuana as well? Actually, separate ordinance for that, as well as solar.
Solar, mineral extraction, towers, and wind systems. So there's four, I could add it too, that would make sense.
Yeah.
Okay. So solar is not currently listed in the table of uses. So I'd like to add that, then electric generation projects. So these are ordinances that we just referenced that. And then my understanding is, when I look at the ordinances, it appears that those uses are intended to be allowed anywhere in town, as long as the standards come in. I want to be clear on that, because we do need to update the table to include that. They're permitted, where they're permitted and where they're restricted. And I don't believe you restricted them anywhere. Is it for wind energy, energy systems, solar, uh, what did I say? Towers, you know, cell towers. Oh, mineral extraction. See the highlighted yellow there? Those are not currently electric generation projects. I believe I went into the ordinance itself and took that out, but no. I believe so. You know what I called this? I can't confirm that.
Boarding, I was gonna ask about this, the boarding, like boarding houses.
So the I was asked to look at some of the definitions. I do have some suggested definitions to include. Um, and I was asked by some members of the council to look into boarding houses. And I looked into a few other things that are outlined. Because we have this use that came to town recently, and everyone's like, what, what is it? You know, is it allowed? Did we define it? So.
And we didn't have anything, so we had to let them? Is that what happened?
No, so I can go on, because I just talked to town attorney this morning on this. So they are gonna be coming back to you. That particular use is gonna be coming back to you, the planning board reviewed, the group one thirty-three. It's the, um, Zis house. Do you guys know what that is? So the Zis house, it used to be a nursing home under one thirty-three. And then it closed, and they came to the planning board, the owner came to the planning board and got permission to have some apartments and some short-term type housing where it was shared facilities. It's where this, um, sober house is gonna go into now. So there's some shared living facilities. It's different than.
When did they come to the planning board with that?
All I remember of that is it was a group apartment, but I never, never saw where it was ever been.
Well, they, they came in and amended it and asked for a few more units. So went to the planning board twice for residential use. And now this use has moved in, it's, it's, it's the same, it's a residential use is what they originally proposed. Shared living facility, so there's, there's quite a few people living in there. It's a, apologize, because I just went through all the definitions today. They want to have a, a sober house, and there are other term, there's other terminology for it. So if it's
The big farmhouse one we did, but.
Mark said that came in fairly recently, you know?
That one was over a year ago.
I don't remember coming back. I remember the first time.
And one big shared facility as well. So the population that's moving in there are people who are in recovery. And it's all peer support. This is what was initially proposed when this got brought up. And I was asked to look into it from a zoning perspective, did it need to go back to the planning board as a permitted use? So, you know, we asked them for more information, and I got the information. And I talked to the town attorney today, and it, it appears to me, and the code enforcement officer and the attorney agreed, in our current ordinance. So this, so you see I've highlighted low-impact, commercial, medium-impact, high-impact. So if we go to the definition section, yes, that was, you have that, two different documents. And I know it'll be easier when it's all, all in one. Okay, so what I had to do, when, you know, like anything that comes in, you look at what is it they're doing and how's it fit into the ordinance. So they, what they proposed for services, there seems to be an agreement by staff that it falls under nursing and convalescent home. So that is a low-impact use, and that is permitted in the district in which it's located with planning board approval. So it is, it is a different use than what was previously approved, so it does require a conditional use permit, so they'll need to come in and get that approval from the law. And the reason I had these highlighted was just because, in my opinion, and I checked with our attorney too, we really should be spelling out specific uses. And I think I mentioned this, it's a permissive ordinance, so if you don't list it as specifically permitted, it's prohibited. So when you have these general standards, something can come in and slide in, may or may not, could be unintended consequences. So, so it calls out specifically retail sales with certain square footage. Um, it calls out some different things, and I think that you should pull out those and put them in the table of uses. Okay, we intended to have retail, we intended to have this, this, this. And then strike those, in my opinion. Pardon me? Yeah. Yeah. And there's always unintended consequences. No, that's, that's a spelling error. I think there's quite a few. I'm not, I'm sure, I'm not sure what, where we're supposed to be in the, with the offense of the. Based on the current ordinances, because it, within those ordinances, so what was the one I was looking at today? Maybe it was the wind one. It breaks it out, certain ones can be proved by the CEO, others have to be proved by the planning board. So what I'd have to do is just break that from the ordinance out into the table and reference the ordinance. Well, I, I've put to get, yes, I do. There is one online, but the last time I used that, it turned out there was one I didn't fill out. So I've created a, um, table of contents for, we talked about having a manual for the planning board new members, and what would be in it, comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, and then any land use ordinance that's not part of zoning, but I'd also eventually like to incorporate them into the land use ordinance, so there's, so it's clear. Yeah. But if we are able to get some funding and get the ordinance qualified and put online, it'd be so much easier for, for the public, for everybody. So we looked at, so, so the concept of low, medium, high, does that make sense to everyone? Do you feel like you would like to go in a direction where you glean things out and call them out more specifically, or do you feel comfortable? We have pieces in place that we like to just evaluate this, them as they come in. I mean, it has, it's worked so far. So someone might say, if it ain't broke, I, I would say that the more development that comes this way, it may break. So then I will, I will start adding uses to this table, and eventually.
I think so.
Well, I think we didn't shoot it. This is all.
I, I'm a little confused and a little concerned that we've got our hands in twenty different pots, and we keep adding to the pots without taking something else off the stove that we finished. And maybe that's just my coming in and kind of you being, but, but it seems we keep biting off more than, and we're not swallowing.
Well, unfortunately.
I think we're always putting out fires.
We've gotten to the core. The core is our ordinance. Try and do is document and put on paper and make rules what it is we've been talking about for months and months and months.
And that's the part I've been missing, is it's been talking for months and months and months.
And, and some, I'm trying to manage as your, as your chairman, Don's trying to manage as your plan. How we get that all down on paper and documented and approved by the council.
Absolutely, we're on the same page. I'm, I'm just concerned that she's got so much, we continue to put so much more on her plate that you get to.
It's more organized in my head than it's coming out, because it's all moving along like this. It feels like it's, you know, but it, in my mind,
You have a plan.
I have a plan. And if it gets, if it doesn't appear to be working at any point, pull the plug, but I feel like.
No, I think these are all valid things. I think the mobile home park, we have to talk about that. I think the sober houses and definitions, we have to talk about that, because it's becoming an issue that the people of the town are really upset about right now. If you're on any Facebook, they are livid about it. So.
And unfortunately, we gotta stay ahead.
We have to stay ahead of it, and also being fair, because you do need sober houses. You want people to be sober. You don't want it to affect the rest of the town negatively, though.
Worst thing we could do is let it, let it fester and not bring it forefront.
I think we've gotten a lot done. Like, we got this done, we've got the mineral ordinance done.
I mean, I take one table. There's a table right here. I came on, like, I do it, I, I've only been on since, I think, June, May and June. And my sense is, this is a priority for people who've been here before us. And so I want to make sure we do it justice.
I'm not happy with this. I'm not happy with this. I made that clear from when we started this.
I think it needs more conversation.
If I didn't ruin the format, Ed and I would review this, and we wouldn't feel so piecemeal right now. So I, I think that you'll feel better once I talk to you and we can get a more.
And, and again, not that it's piecemeal, but I'm also thinking back to the comprehensive plan and the fifty things on there that the planning board's got to attack, and it's like, when do we start, you know, jumping in and getting our teeth into things? But I, but I respected, you know, the work that people put in before me, and I'll go with the flow, absolutely.
I mean, there's cleanup constant stuff, right? And then there's the stuff that's more in concept that you have to boil down. And there are parallel traps. My, my, I thought for this, for this chart is we are, there's three planning board members that are no longer on the board from when we started these conversations. So I think it would be a good idea to have the conversation again about the setbacks and the, the minimum lot sizes with all the current new members.
And I think that's
Possible.
That's what we're trying to get to on the table. To me, I'm a visual one. I have to see it in the tables, and I have to relate to it in the real world, and then I can.
No, I agree.
I can help support it.
This is much better to see.
A month ago.
Yeah.
I have an old copy like this. Somewhere, yeah.
Well, that's what Ed had.
I had a physical copy, but I had to make the changes, because the ordinance has changed since then, so that's what, yeah.
That's the other thing, is what Don and I try to do is, is take advantage of those folks that have disappeared, like Ed. Because that was one of the things he committed to as he left, was to help us with that.
Yeah.
While it's fresh in his mind, you know, I think it will be us to get it done.
Okay.
I think we just gotta be patient. We're gonna, we're gonna be looking at this.
Right.
Do you think it's gonna be too confusing? Do you think it's gonna be too confusing? I, I have it. I'm not concerned, I have it. But if, if it gets to the point where it's confusing, that's not working for you, let me know.
We did that before, we didn't take it one of these at a time, taken six months to do each one.
I don't know how you guys did all the planning you did without a staff person. I don't know, there's a lot that was done. Yep, I feel clear. Um, can I just go back to table two for a moment? And I had a question on lines four and five. Earth moving, it seems to me like those could be combined, so anything greater than ten cubic yards would go to the CEO.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
You strike one of them and make the other one.
Just ten, ten plus.
Yeah, and I think it's that way, because in the, within the shoreline zone, it's called out separately, but it doesn't need to be here.
Yeah, that's right, this does not apply.
No, no, it has its own.
So, where do people at one find the information for this?
There's a separate table, which we are not looking at, so if you go back to table one. And you can see I, I highlighted in gray, I flagged that. Because when I was looking at one, I was trying to figure out why it was that way. We are more restrictive than the state on this.
Yes.
And as far as adding those particular things, I feel clear on that. Community living facility, I have a definition for that. And that is the eight or less, that is what is referred to as a sober, a sober house, can be, can fall under that definition. And it has to, by law, because you can't discriminate, you looked at it as a single family use. So I put a definition, suggested definition there, it's based on the state statute. Um, and that would just be wherever a single family residence is allowed. So even if it's a group of peers and they're supporting each other, it's not a family, you know, as you typically think. It, it's still looked at as a single family. So we just need to make sure that that's allowed and clear. They are. Licensed by the state, and it can be, it could be a foster home, it could be anyone, it's American Disabilities Act. So it's any disability, which substance abuse is considered a disability. So it's to, it's to protect people from being discriminated against. So we'll make sure we meet that. So then, um, also, I just mentioned this in passing, but, so again, Ed did not look at any of this, you can see my comment on here. So we don't have a net residential density column. So I'd like to add that. We have links. So you have, so I also, so here, minimum lot size, I put minimum lot area, because you have a definition of lot area. And lot area excludes wetlands and right of ways, roads. So if you want, if you, okay, so you want to create a lot, uh, it's got to be forty thousand square feet. Which, is it forty thousand square feet of wetland or is it forty thousand square feet of developable area? So you have to have at least forty thousand square feet of land that. Yep, so when you look at this table.
Why?
Well, that, because it's, it can vary. It's, what you put in the table is up to you. But the definition, your definition.
I think that makes it very complicated now.
It's already in there, it's just not represented, it's inconsistent.
But that's not what we currently say. We say if you're a lot size, it's four acres.
But, but you define it. It's in conflict with what your definitions are, so it needs to be consistent. So whatever that looks like, but usually you take out the undeveloped land.
Really? I've never heard that either. I think that is making it very complex. I mean, if that's the way of the world, but where's that at?
And that would, if you came in, Don, and said, I've got forty thousand square feet, I'd say, well, show me your wetland elimination. You gotta go out and pay for it now, or show me what you've got.
No, you're right, it's for the net residential density that you have to, you do have to call that out. So you're gonna come in with twenty mobile homes on this parcel of land. Well, do you have that three thousand square feet of developable land per unit, or is it all wetland? That's where it comes into play. So it's not minimum lot. I'll, I'll double check on that, make sure it's consistent. Something was inconsistent and we also did not have net residential development in our table, net residential density. So I will make that consistent. And have a less stumbly response for you at the next meeting.
Will that also apply to the situation that you folks talked about a few weeks back with the old unitale building? Someone was looking to put residential.
Yes, you, we should look at change, so here's.
Big enough for a bunch of people, but the parking lot is so small that you can only have two of your cars.
It was a minimum land area. So adding the column, what I'm gonna do is take from the text and put in the column what you currently have. And then I think you should look at changing some of those, because, because it's not very, um, it's, it's not a great allowance in the village, just for starters. So you might want to look at putting, allowing more. And all of your comp plan, your downtown plan, everything calls for that. So we'll get, we'll start getting things like. There's that one.
That one as well.
Yeah. He wanted, he came in for twelve and I think he got seven. He couldn't have, because he didn't have the land area. But if you allowed more units per land area, if it's one unit per thousand square feet, as opposed to one unit per ten thousand square feet, means you can have more units on the same sized lot. They, they can have a hundred percent coverage, they do have to have some that's, is that what you're saying? Well, maybe. From an environmental perspective, you want to look at the impervious coverage and treatment of stormwater, but in a city or, or densely developed downtown, maybe you don't. That's the question for the board. Right now it speaks to impervious, I don't think it speaks to open space, but I'll revisit that. I don't know the answer to that. Yeah, so I don't want, he hasn't looked at this table since I updated it, so he may look at it and go, oh, no, no, that's wrong. So I don't want to represent that as.
I'm pretty sure this is pretty accurate. This was a David project, a, a big David.
So what happened was Ed gave me.
Changed everything to, instead of eighty thousand, to make the overall district one acre instead of two acre minimum. And then change all the setbacks to the side rears to ten across the board, and then the street setback to twenty. Which, I think that's fine, but I also, ten feet away from somebody's property line, I think it's awfully close. Kinda don't want somebody to put their shed that close to my property.
So let me make sure that this represents the discussions you all had. And then you can continue what you're gonna do at the meeting, because I, it, this may not be in keeping. I'm hopeful that it is, but I want to confirm with them.
There was some discussion about, um, you've had it on the launch. Sent back public or private ways, shall we measure from the edge of the public right of way or from the edge of the travel portion of the private way? I think the private, private ones covered, it's the public one that we've talked about a lot being from the edge of the, the edge of the road. Just like, just like the one that's on the private way.
That's right, because, and, and that's what, I, I believe you talked to Mark, but that's what.
Generally thirty-three off center, isn't it? Thirty-two feet at off center?
Well, it should be.
Fifty foot right of way, it should be twenty-five feet to the right. That's what Don's saying. The cow wandered down through there.
So what you want to do is change it to the edge of the public road? Gotcha.
And that, that's a settling down, but it's a big deal. I don't know what the number is, but we would save some significant number of appeals, the zoning board appeals. If in need it wasn't forty feet. I, I use the moral drive example. I did a survey of that when I was, when I was looking at my building relative to right of way. And in my mind, if you look at a development, if you look at a neighborhood, rules are wrong, we're standing within a given neighborhood is for that need. Um, I take Maple Ridge, there's a setback that wouldn't be appropriate for Maple Ridge because of the house and the type of build development. The moral, the moral drive, on the other hand, is a whole different, uh, development. I go back a long time, and I'm sure there's a significant number of buildings that are in the right. The point I'm making about that sub point one is, um, I think something.
Twenty feet setback to the road, you're not with the village in the right, right way.
And that's significant, twenty feet is significant. From the edge of the road, rather is private. So anyway, that's my two cents on that. Don, I would, I would give us an alternative to what that verbage is. Stating that, and then we can, as, as a board, we can decide if we want to approve it or not. At least put it in front of us. So instead of saying measure from the edge of the public right of way, it was measure from the edge of the pavement. All traveled road, which are, do we have any dirt roads that are public? So, we want to study this, Don, and you can prepare another meeting to talk about, Jim talks about the details.
So you want me to give you some language, more language based on this conversation, so you can continue this discussion?
We're talking about another workshop, move it along further.
Yes, and today was a deadline for the next planning board meeting, and I was expecting a couple things to come in that didn't come in. So right now, all I received was one sketch discussion, it's for, uh, they want to put a new house, it's in the shoreline district. The house is gonna be outside of the hundred feet, however, they want to put a daylight basement, which would be right up against the hundred feet and would require them to do some cutting of vegetation, some grading, and then replanting, all within the hundred feet. So they don't want to design that, come in with an application and have you guys go, mm-hmm. So they want to come in and have a discussion before they go any further than that. Yeah, Elliot Thayer is the one. Yep, and that, right now, that's all that I have, besides this stuff. You don't have to have public input, I, I feel it's, it's a good time to flush out any issues, so. Yeah, I think that's, so yeah, and then at the conclusion, just make, make sure you're both on the same page, if the app comes clear when they leave, what you're, what you would like to see. No action. So that means that we're gonna have time to revisit these cases. Right? I know.
Not doing those renovations right now.
Well, I think one right now, if we approve back in November, December, they're just breaking ground. They're just, they're just able to break down. Posting roads, rain, and so on and so on, and it backs up. You can't dig a hole here, can't dig a hole here.
Absolutely.
You go with the hole you dig.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, the roads being posted made me so mad this year. We ordered a new, um, I don't know, furnace thing or hot water heater, I don't know what the heck it is, my husband ordered it. They couldn't deliver it to our house, because the roads were posted, because it was too heavy. It was, it was called a big truck, where it was gonna come delivered, right? So my husband's like, oh, I'm just gonna have to have him deliver it to my work and I'll bring it home in my pickup truck, right? Can I tell you the day that they were gonna deliver it? I was like, the, the roads aren't posted, we just got an email, and it was, the thing was already on the way to my husband's work, I was like, you've gotta be kidding me. All this time.
Yep, I'm just scrolling through, uh, most of this is all stuff that, um, I'm going over with Ed, and I'm getting down to the definitions. Oh, don't look, you're gonna get nauseous, I'm going fast. Okay, definitions. That's what I'm gonna propose.
Out of nowhere, like, is it once a year this happens? Something new pops up that we have to have a new ordinance for.
She's always.
One thing for sure is change.
Um, so you have your definition section, so I'm just in the zoning ordinance, I printed. You, you, we should be looking at the same thing, the first page of your definition should be here. And I had just mucked around with that's, that language I put in and this struck out. So, okay, so in the definitions, what, what you'll see here is that I've taken the land use ordinances like the marijuana facility and the towers and the solar, and I've taken all of those definitions and copied them into this ordinance. Because we want to make sure that they're not inconsistent, like sometimes you have conflicting definitions. Um, so there, have them all in one place, and, you know, I had said before, eventually gravitating all of the pieces of those ordinances into the zoning ordinance, but in the interim, at least making sure there's no conflict amongst definitions. And so where you see in red, so MJ means marijuana. Some, a lot of these, like here, this one abandoned, that's comes from the solar ordinance. So these are not new definitions, they're showing up as new to the zoning ordinance, but you've already created them in another ordinance, they exist.
So these are just copy paste.
Correct. So, uh, let's see, solar ordinance, marijuana ordinance, so all of these so far. There's some from the cell tower, cell tower, groundwater. Okay, so boarding house, that could potentially be a new definition. And, um, I was asked by, um, at least one member of the council and the town manager to look into boarding houses as a, as a potential use when this came up, that people were like, what is this? What does it fall under? So we have a definition of boarding house. And it's, we see that it was stuck into the use table, but it didn't say where it was allowed yet, because this is something for discussion if you want to.
What did we, we looked at in ordinance when the old, uh, what's the name of that room? Yeah, that one. Um, they had a recovery group there at the large old farm, and they were adding extra beds on. And we looked at something, gosh, we looked at an ordinance of some sort.
From another town?
No, ours. It was something in our ordinance that we looked at to say, oh, you're allowed to do this, this and this. Do you remember what that was? I can ask Mark if he remembers. Or whatever. Yeah, the big huge farmhouse, the big beautiful one, then they have a small. Yes, how did we go through? Men, yeah, I think it was all men.
Yeah, I think they're adding that. Another building.
Okay, gotcha. They we were referencing something somewhere in our ordinance and I'll have to maybe poke through and see what it is. Yeah, it it was, but I just wanna make sure that we're not.
He'll, yeah.
He will, yeah.
This is one, is this the one you said was only like a year ago?
Maybe it was more. I'm really bad with time. No, no, I've only been on the board for maybe, I don't actually, no, two years, three years. It's probably like a year. I'll I'll go look and 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 see what it was because I just for us to compare like what did we use in the past to make decisions? Is that still good to make decisions in the future or where where are we missing something?
Yeah, I mean, definitely. Yeah, I'll find out, but it's definitely, you know, less is more. We don't wanna put regulations in there just for regulation sake. Whatever's the most easily readable, less confusing, um.
They were allowed to do more if they even wanted to and they said they didn't want to. So whatever we referenced.
I think we were just looking at our existing ordinance.
Well, see, now you have that.
And that was very moral zone.
You have that low, medium, high impact, so if it was considered commercial, you would deem it.
I might even, so I had, I saved the whole one. I have like a whole filing cabinet. I could look back to and see if.
Mark has a pretty sharp memory. Yeah. So if you could just contemplate this use of boarding house and what you think of the definition. And if you want it to be something that's allowed in town, where, what zones you might allow it. Because you'd have to add the definition, you'd have to add it to the use table and then if there's any um performance standards around it. What would that, what would those look like? So this is something to contemplate. No, I don't know what they say. No, I will certainly. Well, some things, I looked at other towns and I typed it and I typed real fast and just, yeah. Like this one, this one one comes from Sanford. Sanford and Alfred both had ordinances that I gleaned some stuff from. I borrowed liberally. So then here we have cell tower marijuana, so those are not new definitions. I highlighted, um, again, the low, medium, high for further contemplation. Okay, community living facility. This is, and I have a couple of different definitions here. We wouldn't include them all. But this speaks to uh disability. This this definition, after I looked into it more, there's a better definition than that. So I would say there's one, but when I get down further, I'm gonna recommend the second one. But so you, so this is here. That's that would be a new definition. Marijuana, solar. Wind, cell tower, cell tower. Yeah, you should map. If your zoning board gets a lot of variance required, it should be the exception of the rules. If you're getting slew of, you should map them. So if you see, oh, we're getting a lot of zoning, yeah, we need to change the zoning potentially, right? So that's what you guys, yeah, makes perfect sense. So this one was from groundwater, solar, marijuana. There aren't very many new ones in here yet because depending on what you wanted to do with that table of uses. I would potentially uh suggest some more. These are all existing. Okay, mining of land. I apologize. Now I can't remember where I got that. I'm gonna highlight that. Just set that aside. Solar. So substantive use recovery center, I had started to look at that. The thing is that we don't wanna define things just to define them. We have something that it's under currently that this whole like we don't wanna duplicate things. So some of these, I'm just brainstorming still. This one right here is? And then we have a definition in the wind um ordinance too. So somehow I wanna term it such that there's differentiated what we're talking about. All right, so we have to make. You do, yep. I've got this draft table of contents and what I wanna do is give it to y'all and see if it if what you don't have. If you already have a zoning ordinance, I'm not gonna print a whole nother zoning ordinance for you, but I'd like you to have a copy of everything, especially like right now, right? For workshopping stuff, you can flip through it and mark it up. Um, when you're looking at things, you know, for development review, it's one of these is static, but when we're talking about changing it, I think it's good to have a hard copy. So I'll get you copies of all that. I don't know the date of hand when that was created.
Uh, next to tower.
Well, the definition's not. I I just jumped to a different document because I didn't see the definition that I wanted to use. Let me see if I didn't copy it. Community living facility we talked about. There was another one pertaining to. Well, I guess I'm gonna have to, um. Uh, there was a definition I wanted to go over with you, but it's not in here. It's it's pertaining to the community living arrangement, but I got it from another ordinance. I just have to. Did you? I thought I could have sworn I put it in. I'm gonna really short one. I had one that was more inclusive. It talked about how it had to be looked at as a single family use. Does that one say that? How did I miss it three times? See, this one doesn't. Oh, see what I just did? I think I, yes. I act, I took it out. I think I, I, you know, it's accept reject changes. I must have rejected that change, so I have to go back at it then. So what this does is the state says you can't discriminate if it's eight or fewer, it's licensed. It has to be allowed wherever you have a single family home. So it doesn't have to go on the use table because it's single family, right? It's like mobile home, it's single family. But I feel like it should be defined because this is what happened with that facility that just came and they were saying, oh, you can't discriminate. You have to look at it as this. Will we, it was difficult. I think we should have a definition of it. Um, and then maybe. No, I'm sorry, for a community um living facility. Because it got really muddy just recently and um I think it'd be helpful to have that in there and then make a statement. And I think it does say, look at a single family for zoning purposes. So then in the table of uses, you wouldn't have to list it separately because it isn't, it is a single family.
Currently, the definition of family says five or five or two or I think. And we're advised by town council that you you really shouldn't do that. You should put a number on it.
Yeah, you can't say how many people are in a family.
So defining family is is sticky.
You take the doors off, put the chickens in the doors, in the cabinets, lay the eggs. Or the supplier of the home, but homes got into big trouble with estate housing lawsuits. So he pulls them all down, they all move towards. So what you're saying currently, we would allow that to happen.
Well, here's the definition of family. I've highlighted it. But I would say based on the conversations I've had recently with town council, we should change it and I don't, first of all, I don't know how you'd regulate it. You know what? Marriage licenses, adoption certificates, pardon me? Yeah.
That's like, you can't put blood in there, like people adopt.
It's probably very old definition, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that needs to change.
I guess what we're trying to say is if you do our control or manage it, whatever the right word is, then you have to define it. We we haven't got a good definition.
I mean, children are protected. Like you can't move into a mobile home, literally can't with eight kids and put them all in one bedroom together. That's against DHS. Well, because it's different because then you can't, say you have stepkids, you can't put a male child that's not blood related with a female child when they're not blood related. They're not allowed to share a room together. There's all sorts of crazy stuff, like when it comes to. Oh, yeah, but that's not. That's the state. That's, that's, yeah, that's not something that we would say. Yeah, that's like child protective services to make sure that there's not anything inappropriate. Well, I don't think we ask, uh, have we ever asked an application, how many people are gonna live in this house? That's, we're not approving that. That's not for us to approve. We're approving the the land use and the earth movement. Somebody would have to report them. Yeah.
So I guess my point is, that's that's a small example of how to get this stuff out of control. We're trying to find a huge facility with some type of service in it for certain people.
It is, we had definition with it uh as licensed. So that's, that's what I have for definitions. I know. That's a lot, but a lot of it is already existing. It's just being incorporated from existing ordinances. So it's really not not asking you to consider a lot of new definitions. The new definitions really are around this this use that has come up that people are. Questioning, I guess.
So in some cases, you're creating, you've created void in here. In some cases, you start to plant a tree with branches on it. Which is gonna have to have a need to. We got both situations and what would we do tonight? Is the board okay with this evolving as we were taking pieces and trying to make it into a ball? Are you okay with this process? And I know all of a sudden done, we wanna see the total package before we approve it, but the workshops are about reviewing pieces as we go. So we see how they blend together and how they fit into the ordinance and what we're trying to do with them. And at some point, I think the sun's gonna come up. That make sense?
So Michael, based on what you're saying, you all seem to be premium. We had talked about this is to. Have Ed look at this document with me that incorporates all the work that you've done and what we're talking about now as, you know, red line document. With all the little messy stuff in there that you can look at it all in one spot. So like for the next workshop, it should be all in one spot and inclusive of the work you've previously done. Does that sound like that would be the tool you need? Yeah, I will, I'll take those and make sure they get them.
So are we okay with that? So the next session will be a workshop, also a counseling session. Counseling session for someone with an application for them to run by as what they wanna do and get feedback.
So there there the the solar application that you had the concept discussion on, he, we texted, not texted, we emailed as recent as yesterday. Making sure he was gonna have the right number of copies and um, you know, what to submit for today. So I was quite surprised. And I went and looked in the clerk's office and everything after four thirty because I thought sometimes there's, you know, like a hockey stop in the parking lot because they wanna get it in the door, but I didn't see anything. So if something came up in fair circumstances, I would consider that and, you know, possibly take that application. So, but that's the only other one that. But that would be the circumstance that you could possibly have that, but I don't know why you would have missed it. And the zoning map, the period, time period will have gone by.
And then that gets kicked to town council.
And also the comprehensive plan should be adopted before your next meeting, so I could make everyone a copy of that. That is on our radar for the next meeting. I've done a lot of the work. I will include that in the amendments that I'm working on with Ed. And I will get some more information based on the discussion we had with uh Mark. I'm not familiar, yeah, I'm not familiar enough with um. With the whole process of the licensing and what inspection we get annually and I wanna be more versed in what that status of the property is.
Might be aware of any issue with doing it where we can.
Yes, yes.
We did that. Don and I did that the other day and Mark joined us and in what case did that wish you a market share with us. Annual review by the federal government. And one of the main questions they asked him were, are there any permits for the use of that property for that site? So just just so you know, we did have a conversation.
Yes.
As well about that.
And that site, is that, that's owned by the county? It's turned over after mediation?
I and I wanna make, I have certain understanding and I wanna make sure that what I'm thinking are actually facts. You know, because Mark told us that information, but I don't know what that report consists of, who gets turned into. You know, cause Mark told us that information, but I don't know what that report consists of, who gets turned into.
Who owns it? Are we actually issuing permits? Are we allowing people to lease the land for anything, or is it just? Just wondering if at some point we wanna advertise to somebody. Yeah.
Look at this great piece of land.
I did say that. Highway department is using some aspects of it.
Okay.
It's a beautiful building, it's two beautiful buildings.
I've never actually been there.
There's a lot of expensive equipment in there that they were using for remediating the water and finally the air.
Whatever happened, can I ask, do we have, do you have a moment to share with me what happened there? I keep hearing super fun, what does? It was a landfill.
And there were certain chemicals that ended up in that landfill from the manufacturing process. And they had.
Is the landfill right on the water?
Well, it's on Annabaskic Road, I don't know how close it is to water.
Okay.
But that wasn't far fetched.
It's normal. You find some crazy stuff in your backyard, maybe, when you buy a new house.
Buy an old house.
Many, many tires.
I appreciate patience because it was not ideal, again, for you to get that information tonight, but I really appreciate going through it like this, it was perfect.
Jim, anything for input?
He's gone.
We're gone.
He got bored. He probably, cause he probably can't even read anything we're looking at. I don't blame him, you know, it's gotta be frustrating. No, cause all the charts are probably not.
Well, the zoning ordinance. That, I don't know that that shows. No, it doesn't, because, um, it just says town of Winthrop. Thank you all.
Are you able to look back? Oh, okay, are you able to look back? I think it was March. Last March, we approved a solar farm on Annabaskic Road. We did a height restriction, I'm pretty positive on those solar panels.
So I have all the files around those. I, I have the files.
Okay. Height, because I remember that they wanted to do like twenty foot ones, you remember this?
Yeah, they, 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 they had.
Right. Do you see what they're building? They're huge, they're not fifteen, they look bigger than twenty feet tall. Yeah, how, how tall do you think this is?
I just, I didn't even pay attention.
I drove down, uh, like going towards Jobs Farm. They've started it. I went and I went, whoa, I was like, that's not, that can't be. I know, and my husband told me not to say anything, but I'm like, I just, so specifically, like those people, the poor neighbors were really upset about it.
You can call me with stuff or email me with stuff.
Yes, yeah. Yes, definitely. Not to be a Karen about it, but just, I know how upset those people were of having it in their backyard. So we tried to be really careful about the buffers, this is before we had the ordinance. The height restriction, you can't do the tilting and then I drove by and I'm like, holy smokes, those are huge.
Wouldn't let them put in the.
Tilting, whirling twirlies. Yeah, and that, then I was questioning it, I was like, did we just tell them they couldn't do that? Right. But the purpose of us doing that is because we didn't want the twenty foot. Yeah, I don't know what happened if somehow they.
Is anybody else monitor the Facebook page for the pendulum?
I'm on there.
Yeah. But somebody brought, Neil had mentioned, we need to look at other things, like we need to help.
Are we done recording?
Somebody said, well, we need a solar ordinance.